Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good to see a good crowd here tonight. Like the thing, maybe that means we're doing something right. Who knows?
Or.
Or. We shall find out. Stay up over here. All right, first thing on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I hope everyone's had a chance to look at those and review them and any changes, additions. And they stand as approved. Report of the Town Manager, Mr. Warner.
Thank you, Mayor Stanley, members of council. Just a few items for your information tonight. Wanted to report that based on modeling tools and projections available through ESRI, planning staff estimates the current population of the town to be right around 8,000 people. We're still waiting on people like Weldon Cooper and the Census Bureau to catch up from the boundary adjustment, but our own internal estimates peg us right around that mark. Also wanted to advise that the proposed roundabout at the Forks intersection did not score highly enough to advance within the VDOT Smart Scale Funding Program. There are no further plans to proceed with that proposal at this time, and it would be at least a couple of years before we might hear anything else about it. And also at this time, I want to take a moment to introduce one of our new colleagues who's joined our staff, although he's been here for a little bit. With us tonight is Jeremy Marcus, who is our building inspector, who is working with Gary McIver, our building official. Jeremy is currently in the process of becoming a certified building official himself. And he's been here with us a few months already and doing a great job and providing good service to the development community. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'll be pleased to respond to them.
I will say, I'm aboard, Jeremy. And even though I know that one trainee tends to try to be invisible, you just drag him and make him teach you all he knows. You'll be fine. Appreciate it. Any questions for the Town Manager? All right, appearances before council, we have a couple. First one is a Matt Legasse. You gonna say that one? Come on, okay. Good deal. State your name and residence, where you live, and let us know what's on your mind.
My name is Max Legasse. I live at 3674 Forest Road in Bedford, Virginia. And I work at the Little Otter Flower Farm located near the Little Otter River. And today, we are going to talk about, like, spreading the season of kindness. My name is Max Legasse from the Little Otter Flower Farm. And last week at the Bedford Farmers Market, we started spreading the season of kindness for the 2025 flower season. Our goal is to deliver 500 random acts of kindness in Bedford County throughout the year. And we, a random act of kindness of flowers is a, is an arrangement of my rights of color flowers delivered to a person or organization anywhere in Bedford County. People can come to the Bedford Farmers Market on Saturdays and order a random act of kindness for $10. And alternatively, they can do it online at littleotterflowerfarm.com for $15. I thank you so much, and I hope to see you all at the Bedford Farmers Market throughout the year.
We appreciate that, Matt. Thank you for that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Susan Tinsley and Linda.
Thank you. Emery.
Emery. All right.
Good evening. My name is Susan Tinsley. I'm currently serving as president for our Food for Kids organization. With me this evening are two of our executive board members, Linda Emery and Sheree Whitehurst. And we're so excited to be able to come and share our program with you. According to the Virginia Department of Education, 8.6 out of 10 students in Bedford County schools we serve qualify for food assistance. These families live at or below the poverty level. Food for Kids packs weekend bags of food for students to take home for them and their families. It's a bag filled with meals and snacks so kids don't go hungry when they're not at school. We started packing these bags in 2010 for Body Camp Elementary School. When Body Camp closed, we followed those kids to Goodview, Manita, and Huddleston. In the last couple of years, we've added Montvale Elementary and Stewesville Elementary. And what is so exciting for us, and I hope for you, is last month, January 2025, we added Bedford Elementary and Bedford Primary Schools to our program. Every week during the school year, we pack between 650 to 700 bags for these kids. We pack every Thursday in our packing space located in Manita. So we started with one school, we're up to seven, and we are very pleased because adding Bedford has been a long time coming, and we've been asked to do this. And we are hoping that this will be good for you as well as good for those kids. Research shows that those who experience hunger are more likely to have illnesses, chronic health conditions, and more absences resulting in reduced school achievement. Last year with the five schools, we packed almost 17,000 bags. This year, since we have added to Bedford schools, that number will increase substantially. We have an executive board that meets monthly to plan, implement, and evaluate our program. We are a 504, 3C nonprofit. We have no paid staff. Between 25 and 30 volunteers come together every week to pack, pick up, and deliver to all seven schools. When we added Bedford Elementary and Bedford Primary, Sheree Whitehurst, one of our board members, took the lead to seek out volunteers in the Bedford community to pick up bags at our packing site and deliver them to the schools. I think there's a couple of you here that we're getting on our list to help us deliver, and we're happy to add you to our volunteer list. Our funding comes from grants, donations from civic organizations, businesses, individuals, churches, fundraisers, and for food drives. All of our bread is, products are donated through, with our partnership with Lake Christian Ministries. All of our peanut butter and all of our cereal is donated. We struggle to keep our cost of our bags at $10 per bag per child. That's per week times 700 bags times four weeks a month times nine months out of the year. Our faith and our heart for children make all of this a labor of love. We appreciate the time to share our story. Our contact information is on the brochure that you have in front of you. We have a website, we have a Facebook page. If you or someone that you know would like to volunteer or come out and see our program on Thursday morning, we would love to have you come. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Ms. Tinsley. It's a very worthwhile program, and we'll certainly spread the word.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments? All right, council comments. Jay, what you got for us, anything?
No, just glad to see everybody out here tonight. We got a good crowd going on. Welcome, Jeremy. Keep your eye on Pop Smur. And thanks to the Food Bank people for what y'all do and for helping the kids. We appreciate that.
I just want to thank Public Works and Electric Department for helping, keeping our town open during the bad weather and keeping lights on, so.
Guess I'll start off with a little somber note there. Guess since our last meeting, we had a passing of one of our former chiefs of police, Ted King. He was the chief that actually hired me back in 1983. He was a, he was a, he was a hard man to work for, but you definitely knew going into something if you were doing the right thing or the wrong thing. But anyway, he was, he passed away like a couple, couple of weeks ago, and he was a, you know how long he worked here?
I think it was about 1980 through 87.
So, yeah, he was, but he made, he made a big impact while he was here. Like to thank the Electric Department and the Public Works and the Police Department for being out in all the cold weather and all the adversities they had trying to keep lights on and streets safe during all, like I said, all the, all the inclement weather we had. And, and just sort of follow up with the Food for Kids. I first became aware of this last year when I was at one of the South Side elementary schools. And they pulled up next to the school and there's bags stacked up inside the smallest of vehicles. I didn't know how, bags just kept coming out. And, and there would be wagons full when only, once they got them inside, inside the school, and then they'd be passed out and put on buses later on. And it was like, hey, they, how does all this food get on here? And, you know, you could just, you could just see when the, when the parents would come to pick the, you know, the kids up at various times, they were very appreciative of it. So that's, that's, that's good work. And, and then when I heard that the program was coming to our two town schools, I thought this was, this is outstanding. I'm glad to see that's happening. And I also heard that it's like, you know, 90 students, 90-plus students per school that's affecting, you know, our, our schools here that are benefiting from this program. And to watch, like I said, to watch these, these, this, this unloading of the, of the bags from the, from the, their vehicles into the school, it's a process. And I have a, a personal campaign going on that actually, Councilman Haley here helped me out with. We've got this collapsible wagon that we got, that he helped me procure from Lowe's that, it's one wagon, and we got it at one of the schools right now. And so, Councilman, I'm gonna be looking for you guys later on to help me procure others. You know.
I'll see if I can do some more for you.
All right. So, yeah, I'll be looking to each one of you to help us find some more wagons to help these other schools. Okay, whatever it takes. But that's all I got. And thank you, everybody, for being here. Appreciate your attendance and anything we can do for you, let us know.
Anyway, let's see, I'd like to really thank everybody there, you know, for showing up and coming to these council meetings. And I was very pleased with the way that the town, like you said, anyway, the Electric Department in this last, you know, storm that we had, streets were very clear, very passable. I know that the streets in maybe some part of the county, anyway, just wasn't quite there. Like I said, the, the town of Bedford really stepped up to the plate there. And like to thank Mrs. Kingsley for being here, and I think I'm gonna be one of your drivers, so I look forward to helping y'all out.
You've not seen the way Dry drives.
On time.
So we had the last guy, I just wanted, you know, it's, I can't be what Daryl was saying, but the, I just do appreciate you coming out. I mean, it's, it's really great to see as many people out as, as are here tonight. I just pass the word, you know, every, you know, two times a month we meet, so see if we can get this place packed, because, you know, it's all about getting the community involved as well, just not us up here on the podium. And again, the ministries that you guys do, I mean, you know, kids are our inheritance, so let's, let's keep doing the good work there as well. So thanks for coming out, thanks for the town staff for all they do, and that's all I got. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I do want to thank you all for coming and informing us about this Food for Kids program. I probably knew about it, but they had forgotten about it from years gone by. You know, when your kids come out of school and go out on their own, you don't keep up with things quite as much. But now we got grandkids coming along, so that will probably, as they say, what goes around comes around. But appreciate y'all doing this. I do want to thank the Public Works, Electric, and Police for the great job they did during the ice storm and snow. The, I went by this morning and personally thanked Public Works. Unlike some localities, they cleaned the roads during the ice and snow, also picked up the trash every day. Other localities did not do that. My father-in-law and others were right, and they didn't get their paper for three days. So Public Works kept the streets clean, safe, you could go through town with no problems, and also picked the trash up. That's quite an accomplishment. Electric, they actually had a main transmission line go down, which is the equivalent of an interstate being stopped. That's why it took a little longer for the power to be restored, but they got out there and did it in cold temperatures and ice, and did a great job as usual. And the police, as usual, on their part, kept law and order. So I thank all of them. Report of council committees. We did not have any revisions to the agenda. Don't have any? All right, public hearing, granting competitive cable franchise.
The town of Bedford has received a proposal for a non-exclusive, long-term franchise for a maximum of 10 years to use and occupy the streets and public rights of way of the town for the purpose of constructing, installing, and maintaining a system of cables and facilities to provide cable television services to the general public. Copy of the full text of the proposal has been on file in the office of the Town Manager. Tonight, the town will receive additional propos, the town will receive additional proposals until February 21st. The proposals must have been in writing. The right to reject any and all proposals is hereby expressly reserved. Further information, including a copy of the proposed franchise in the town code, could have been obtained by contacting the town clerk. Proposals or summaries thereof shall be read publicly by the mayor of the town of Bedford at the regular meeting of the town council on Tuesday, February 25th at 7:00 PM or as soon thereafter as the agenda permits. And after the reading of the proposals, council will either proceed to award one or more franchises or defer the matter for consideration and analysis at a subsequent meeting. All proposals should have been received no later than February 21st at 2:00 local time. And at this time, anyone who wishes to speak to the matter is invited to do so.
We'll now open the public hearing up. Anyone that would like to come up and speak on behalf of the cable franchise, it is your time to come up and speak. I'm not seeing any movement, so I will now close the public hearing. That was pretty simple.
You did good, Mayor.
Well, all right. At this time, no consent agenda, no old business, new business. Presentation, Blue Ridge Power Agency, Alice Wolf. Long time no see.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. Alice Wolf with the Blue Ridge Power Agency. Just briefly, Blue Ridge is a membership association. We're very glad to have Bedford as one of our members. We also have eight other electric utility members, all within the state of Virginia, mostly municipals like Front Royal, City of Salem, City of Bradford, Town of Richlands, the City of Martinsville, and a couple of cooperatives. And tonight, I am here to talk to you about some coming cost increases. So I'll talk specifically about the capacity cost increases that will be coming in just a few short months, unfortunately. So just to start with just a little bit of background, we, Bedford is part of a larger electric grid. That grid is operated by an organization called PJM. That actually name is a little bit of an acronym. Is anybody, it's three states that originally formed it. Any guesses on what those states might be?
Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and Maryland.
So those three states came together and formed this organization to pool power resources. And PJM does a lot of things. They operate the high voltage transmission system, they have energy markets that they run. Tonight, what we're talking about is capacity. And this graph is here to give you an idea of what capacity is. So this is Bedford's energy load for the month of December 2022. Starting on the left side, that's December 1st, and it goes all the way across to the right side, where we have December 31st. And you can see most of the time Bedford was under about 35 megawatts. It was only one little part of the month where the town got up to 53 megawatts. December 24th, Christmas Eve in the morning, that was Winter Storm Elliott, when we had just a terrible winter storm, very cold, and so a lot of electric heat online. Bedford was absolutely not the only utility that was having such a high rate at that point. But this, this is here just to demonstrate what capacity is. Most of the time, you don't need all of this energy, right? But on certain times, you do. And when, when you need the energy, you have to have the generation available. Generation and electricity are balanced in real time. There's really no storage. So if you walk over and flip on a light switch, you can think of somebody putting more coal in the boiler. It's really a real-time operation. So PJM is responsible for making sure that there is sufficient, sufficient capacity for all the electric generation needs in its territory. And the way that PJM does this is that they buy it through auctions. So PJM doesn't own the generation, they don't operate it, but they do go out and say, hey, we've got all this load in our area. Bedford is one of those load-serving entities, along with the other Blue Ridge members. We know that they're going to need this capacity, so here's how much capacity we want to buy. Generators submit bids to sell that capacity to PJM, and then PJM assigns a proportion of those charges to each of the load-serving entities. So Bedford ends up paying for that capacity. They pay it through their AMP bill, AMP pays PJM on your behalf. They buy through auctions. I mention that because auctions are generally a pretty good tool to get a low-cost product. You know, the generators are independent generators, independent power producers, that's all they do is generate energy, generate electricity. They're putting in bids to run this. So PJM can take all different bids and stack them up and get the lowest-cost ones to meet their needs. What we see on this chart is about the last 10 years of the clearing prices through PJM auctions. So over on the left side of the chart, we've got the delivery year 2016, 2017, and that was at about $3 per KW month. And then you can see from there, it goes up a little bit, it goes down, it goes up. I'll just call your attention to the last two bars on the right side. The shortest one there, that's the current delivery year we're in. So as of this month, you're paying less than $1 per KW month for capacity. And then you see the next, the highest bar in this chart is over $8 per KW month. That is for the delivery year that begins June 1, 2025. So the bills for that will come due in July. Nearly a 10x increase in that auction. As, as I've said, I don't think anyone was really predicting that prices were going to go up like that. So what we're seeing is a lot more demand as more data centers are coming online and not enough generation to meet that. So we're seeing those two things get closer together. We've seen a lot of coal plants retire over the last few years, and that's part of the reason why we're seeing this shrinking, less, less available generation, just as we have more demand coming online. So a really significant increase in capacity prices. This is not something that's in Bedford's control. This is not within AMP's control, not within Blue Ridge's control. We would not want to see prices, you know, fluctuate so wildly like that. This really is because of that PJM auction and how the auction process was handled. Unfortunately, Bedford is gonna see that bill in just a few short months. bill in just a few short months. So I want to talk a little bit about how Bedford has prepared for a situation like this. And I think there's only one chart that you walk away remembering. This would be the chart that I'd say, you know, focus now, on this one. So let's talk through it. What we see is dollars per megawatt hour and the impact of capacity alone to those rates. And this is the last about 10 years of those capacity charges. The white charges is what your capacity bill would be without any offsetting credits. So if you were just not doing any peak shaving, didn't have any generation, that is what your bill would be. You can see for the current delivery here, that's the next-to-last chart over there, next-to-last bar, I'm sorry, the white one is under $5 per megawatt hour. And the very last one, the tallest bar on there, it is probably about $23, $24 per megawatt hour. So just a really significant increase there. The red one is your actual capacity charges, your net capacity charges. And the reason for that is that Bedford has taken strategic steps to prepare for a situation like this. So I'll talk through those strategies in the next couple of slides. But you can see, because you've made investments in generation, because you've participated in some very large generation projects with other public power utilities, you are offsetting very significant portions of those capacity charges. So I do, I do want to give kudos to the town. I recognize that with a capacity cost increase like this, your rates don't have the bandwidth in them to just absorb something like that, right? But the fact is, if you hadn't been thoughtful, strategic, and proactive, it could have been much worse. So you have been looking at this and preparing for a situation like this. Questions about this slide before I go on? Okay, so two main strategies we use to try to mitigate those high-capacity prices. This first one refers to very large generation facilities that are shared and owned with other public power, mostly municipalities. So I'll just talk through each line of this chart. The first one is the Southeastern Power Administration. So this is hydroelectric power at the Carr and the Philpott dams, so actually here in Virginia. And the Southeastern Power Administration is actually a division of the Department of Energy. So these are, Philpott's a pretty small generation resource, about 16 megawatts. Carr's, I want to say 260, so much bigger. Not a lot of the, it's a pretty small portion of Bedford's generation overall, but it is providing an estimated $120,000 in the upcoming delivery year. So it absolutely has capacity value in addition to the energy value from receiving that hydroelectric energy. And then the next two lines, I probably should have switched them and just made them one line because they're both referring to the AMP Fremont Energy Center. That is a natural gas combined cycle facility in northwest Ohio. It is owned and operated by AMP. AMP is a much larger membership organization that provides the majority of Bedford's power to it. And so they own and operate this resource. I think this has been a very good resource for you. There are probably 75 to 80 other utilities who also participate in Fremont. And in this coming year, Fremont will provide about $800,000 worth of capacity value to you. So pretty significant value there. And then the last one is the Prairie State Energy Center. This is a mine-mouthed coal plant in southern Illinois, and you can take 7.86 megawatts of it. There are a number of other utilities that are also taking power from Prairie State as well. And in the coming delivery year, Prairie State will provide $600,000 worth of capacity value for you. So pretty significant value from these very large resources, totaling about 1.4 million for this upcoming year. So that's one significant strategy that Bedford has taken on and used to mitigate against a high-capacity cost situation like what we're looking at. These are long-term investments. These plants have lifespans between 30 and 50 years. So these are something that, you know, past councils and past staff members from the electric department had to come and look at and, you know, make the decision to make these investments over the long haul. And I really give Bedford a lot of kudos for this slide as well. So this looks at the various generation that you have on your own electric distribution system, from solar to hydro to the diesels, that really just run when you need that, when you're peak shaving. They don't run very often, but they are very valuable when they do run. I think it is incredible that a utility of Bedford's size was able to peak shave almost $800,000 worth in this coming year. That is, that is pretty unusual, to be honest. And so I give you a lot of credit for this. So this is a little bit different strategy than the last slide. And those other resources, those are very large resources. They are bidding into that PJM capacity market. They're selling their capacity to PJM. PJM's giving them a revenue stream. On this one, what we do instead is we look for when the PJM peaks are going to be. AMP actually gives a signal to, to John and his team. They make sure that they have the fuel they need, the resources, the staff, everybody's all aligned. And then they actually make sure the generation is running during those peak times. So it actually lowers the load on your substations, and so you never see that bill. It's just an avoided bill because you have these resources that you were running during those peak hours. So that's a really critical strategy, and I, I think the town's been very effective in implementing it. If you don't have water during those five peak hours for your hydro plants, you know, you can't run. So it is what it is. But because you've made this very diversified strategy, a little bit of solar, a little bit of hydro, you've got some diesels, you know, you're able to still, I think, have a good effect overall. And these are also investments that the town has to look at and consider. I mean, these are long-term investments that you, you know, make with your, your ratepayer funds to say, what, does this make sense? You've got to take a look at it, make sure it's feasible. But I give the town kudos for being proactive and strategic about this. So unfortunately, there will be a significant increase in the capacity charges that Bedford will see. Those charges will begin on June 1, so the first bill will come due in your wholesale bill. The first bill will come due in July of this year, just a few short months down the road. This is an increase beyond our control. You know, it was caused by the PJM auction. It is not something that anyone in the town of Bedford has done, anyone at AMP or Blue Ridge, you know, that would, that would not be our strategy. But that increase is coming, and it is beyond our control. And the electric utility in the town really has been strategic in taking a look and considering situations like this, where there could be very high costs. How can you mitigate against that and try to protect the town's customers from seeing these increases? Unfortunately, I do think we're in a situation where we'll probably see high-capacity prices for the next few years. So, you know, we know we have more data centers coming online, particularly in the Dominion Zone in Virginia. It takes a long time to build very large generation resources, anywhere from seven to 10 years. So we're probably going to be seeing higher capacity for a while still, unfortunately.
I think we're the same as we were earlier. We're, we're kind of struck by a lightning bolt here in that we're, we're trying to absorb it and try to figure out what, if anything, we can do. But I do appreciate you bringing this to us and explaining it in more detail. We do have a big challenge ahead of us. We are looking at a sizable increase, and we've just got to figure out how we're going to handle it and what we can do. I do give John a lot of credit in that we do produce about 20% of our capacity, about what you just said, hydro, wind, and hydro, solar, and diesel. So we may have to look at more alternatives on that end. But I, I don't know at this point, but we've certainly got to do some brainstorming and see just what, if anything, we can do. But certainly, we'll, I'm sure, be in touch with you from time to time and, and hopefully get more good news.
Be nice. Absolutely.
But we do appreciate you coming. Y'all have anything?
Yeah, just a question. As far as the, the auction that, that took place, that, how, how long ago did PJM know that we were going to be paying this, this amount of money?
That's a really good question. So the auctions are supposed to occur three years in advance, but this last auction occurred last July.
Okay.
So they, they have been making so many changes to their auction structure, the rules, the process that they got off their normal three-year-in-advance schedule. So we really had almost no notice. I mean, if the auction clears in July for a delivery year that begins June 1, you don't have strategies, right? Like, what can you do in 11 months? It really puts us in a bind, to be honest.
And, and I think we sort of touched on this during the work session, but a lot of this chaos was sort of, was a result of just an unknown market, a result of unstable rules as far as operating a power plant, you know, people not knowing exactly what was going to be legal now versus what's going to be legal in five years, and they want to make a 50-year investment in something. Is that, is that kind of where we are with?
I think that's a fair assessment. I mean, there have definitely been policy reasons pushing fossil generators out of service before their lifespan, before those plants were, you know, they, they still had more life left in them, and policymakers have said that's not the direction we want to go. So that's, that's something that has pushed a lot of potentially valuable resources out of the mix. And then, yeah, you know, I mean, I think we would, it's something we talk about at Blue Ridge, is if you put in another fossil generator, how long will you be able to operate it? You know, especially if you're making a very large capital investment in a natural gas facility that's 1,000 megawatts, you want to be able to run it for 30 years. But if there's changing political climate and the rules change, are you going to recoup your investment? That's, that's a risk that folks have to look at.
So we have federal regulations closing down plants or keeping new plants from opening, but we still have demand. So supply, demand?
Yes, absolutely. So we're seeing supply shrinking because we've seen this generation going offline over the last few years, and at the same time, demand is going up. So those curves are, you know, crossing at a different perspective. We have just less, less generation available. At the same time, we have more demand with more data centers coming online. So it's pretty simple economics in that regard.
And then just one more little, I'll bring the slide back up where you had the, the, the red graph and the white graph. There we go. And this, the white graph shows what the, the price would be had the town not had made certain, certain policies and certain procedures to mitigate those things.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. So the white is if you had not made any of your investments in those large shared resources, or if you didn't have the generation resources on your own lines, the solar and the diesels and the hydro.
So as bad as it is, it could have been a whole lot worse.
That's right. A lot worse.
Just like Councilman, a lot of this falls down to the government green deal, correct?
I definitely think some of it does, yeah. I mean, I definitely think the closing of coal plants has played a role here. PJM changing its auction rules frequently has, has not helped, to be honest. So that's, those all kind of tie in together. Yeah.
Well, you've said it all. I, I like to think it may get better, but I, I think you, you probably summed it up in that any investment utility makes, you don't know the political climate that's going to regulate it, and it's a risk. It's a gamble. So hopefully, maybe things will smooth out at some point and get a clear direction. But at this point, it's, it's not. But we do appreciate you coming and giving us that talk.
My pleasure. And I would say, you know, I think with some of, as you look at behind the meter generation, if it has a very short-term payoff, that's kind of a different scenario, right? Three to five years is different than a 30-year payoff. So something to keep in mind as you're looking at other options down the road. So.
Good deal. Thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you so much.
Everybody okay? Okay, let's, let's move on. Oh, and the spending competitive cable franchise.
Under the Virginia Constitution and provisions of the Virginia Code, towns may only grant franchises for the use of public property, including public rights of way, for a term of more than five years after advertising and receiving competitive proposals. Pursuant to the Cable Communications Policy Act of 1984 as amended, cable companies may apply to localities to use their streets and rights of way. As a general rule, localities may only refuse such applications if the franchise application does not meet the provisions of state and federal code. Staff and the town attorney advise that we believe that the franchise ordinance as negotiated with Comcast meets the requirements of state and federal code and adequately protects the public interest and public rights of way while providing an additional competitive cable TV option within town limits. The town cannot require a company to provide internet as part of this franchise. However, cable companies typically do often offer internet service in tandem with their cable TV offerings. And let's be candid, this is actually an internet service contract. We just can't call it that under the Code of Virginia. The town clerk has advertised the franchise in accordance with the requirements of Virginia Code. Staff wishes also to note that as requested by council last year, we are more forcefully and consistently enforcing the provisions of town code, which provide for permitting, surety, and restoration requirements for working the public right of way. A full presentation on that from staff will be given to council in the near future. Tonight, I recommend that, based on the proposal of Comcast to provide competitive cable TV services in the town on an equitable and negotiated basis, that the mayor asks whether any further bids are offered and therefore thereafter formally close bidding. Secondly, if the town council receives no more bids, then council should consider awarding the franchise ordinance attached to this action item to Comcast. If town council receives more bids, it may either accept those bids and award them also, or direct staff to further investigate the matter and return to council at the earliest opportunity to provide advice and analysis. So first thing I need you to do, Mayor, is ask if there are any other public bids for cable franchise services.
Are there any more public bids for a cable franchise service?
Seeing none, if you could close the bidding.
Again, see as soon as it ends. Okay, see none. There are none. Do I hear a motion?
Sorry, ma'am. I'm sorry, is the motion to award the franchise to Comcast as presented?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
We do need specification.
Yes, to award, to award the cable franchise to Comcast, correct. Councilman Haley made the motion, and Councilman Ippolito seconded the motion. Any discussion?
Do we have any other franchise? Does this notify any other franchise that we have?
It does not. In fact, this is a good time for me to give an update. We currently have a 10-year franchise in place with Shintel that expires in, let's say, 2027. They have indicated their willingness to enter into negotiations to renew that one. We also granted a franchise last year to Zytel. And so effectively, this, if this were granted to Comcast, citizens would have at least three franchise choices within town, which, to the best of my knowledge, we've never been in that position before.
Now, are all three of these cable as opposed to?
We have to call them cable even though we know darn well they're internet. Am I allowed to say that, Mr. Attorney?
You can say that.
Okay.
I think you already said it.
I think I've said it more than once.
You're right.
We can call a sheep a pig in this situation.
Say it again, I guess.
Anything else? All right, roll call, Sean.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foreman is absent. Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with six members voting aye.
All right, next thing under new business, budget amendment to purchase transformers for Eastland Crossing.
This request for transformers is to serve the development known as Eastland Crossing between Independence Boulevard and Lowry Street. The order represents about 50% of those ultimately required to serve the development. Extended lead times dictate that the order be placed well in advance of the need to install them. Pricing is the result of an RFP issued earlier this year. Once funds have been made available, a PO will be issued so the vendor can go ahead with the order. Tonight, town council... Tonight, town council is requested to approve the below-budget amendment, budget amendment, which will appropriate budget to general ledger accounts as follows: a decrease in the expenditure line item identified as contingency of $183,000, and an increase in the expenditure line item entitled "Infrastructure Improvements and Extensions" of $183,000.
All right, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Councilman Updike made the motion, and Councilman Haley made the second. Discussion. I think this is basically something we have to have, so I don't think we have much of a choice here. Not that we would want one. So I have a couple questions. If you don't mind.
Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. So I know last month, we, we approved the switchgear, correct?
Correct.
And all the transformers right here, how many transformers do we actually, is this the ground transformers or the ones?
Yeah, these are pad-mount transformers, correct.
So how many is that we're buying, actually?
You know, I don't know off the top of my head. It's, it's identified in the RFP, but I don't really recall. I'm sorry.
I'm just throwing this out here. Wouldn't it be just more sensible to buy them all at one time because it would be cheaper right now?
Well, let me interject. That kind of relates to our next item of new business in our surety policy. The risk you would be taking is that the development either does not happen in a timely manner or there is a change in the market, whereas it does not happen at all. It's certainly council's prerogative to consider that, but that's not the recommendation of staff.
Yeah. Yeah, you don't really get a volume discount.
Okay.
But the thing is, it would just be such a burden for us to buy all those transformers, knowing that we wouldn't need them for multiple years in advance. So we feel comfortable with this purchase because depending how fast this development goes, we could, if it's slow, we could put them at other developments such as Governor's Hill or Harmony. Yet we have a good enough stock that if they do move quickly, we can, we can supply them.
Okay, I know materials will probably go up in the next couple of years, so that's why I was just asking that question.
It is possible, but I think Bart had it right. We want to take that risk to buy that many transformers in advance and knowing that there's some chance that they could develop it more slowly if they can't sell, you know, depending on the, on the real estate market. So I think it's a good balance.
Anything else? All right.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with six members voting aye.
All right, next new business, resolution adoption of town infrastructure bonding policy.
When developers propose and develop new subdivisions, they often must install new public infrastructure at their cost necessary to serve the new development. Within town limits, this most typically includes roads and streets and improvements to adjacent streets that serve the subdivision, new water and sewer infrastructure, and new stormwater management infrastructure. Virginia Code requires the town to have policies and procedures to ensure that appropriate surety is posted, to ensure that if the developer defaults on these obligations, the town has some ability to draw on funds to complete the facilities deemed necessary. This can be particularly important if a subdivision is partially finished and lots have been sold, but infrastructure is not yet complete. Surety is posted at the time that a subdivision plat or site plan is approved, not at the stage of a rezoning or conditional use permit. In order to implement this requirement, staff analyzed to what extent this was already required. Stormwater improvements are typically approved in tandem with a site plan and grading plan, and Bedford County handles stormwater management permitting within town limits and already requires surety in connection with stormwater improvements. Bedford Regional Water Authority also has a bonding policy and typically reviews plats in tandem with town review under the requirements of state law. It wishes to continue that bonding policy. However, the town must accept new subdivision infrastructure, such as roads and streets and other infrastructure, as part of new development. This policy provides for a town policy for acceptance of town infrastructure. The zoning administrator also wishes to advise council that due to changes in state law, as well as implementing, implementing the provisions of the recent updates to the town's land development ordinance dealing with zoning, updates to the subdivision provisions of the land development ordinance are also likely to be initiated planning commission level in the near future. Tonight, I am recommending adoption of the updated town bonding policy.
Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Councilman Updike made the motion, and Councilman Evans seconded the motion. Discussion.
Yeah. Go ahead. You know, I'm not a rocket scientist, so a question about, it seems like, again, to me, that the developer of a subdivision responsible for all infrastructure except electrical, is that kind of seem, because, because it seems like why, in this situation, you know, the developer is going to be paying for sewer, water upgrades, and everything else like that, so why aren't they paying for what we just voted on, kind of upfront kind of thing? That's what I'm just curious.
I think, and Mr. Harf can correct me if I say anything incorrect, I think we do have the ability as the utility vendor for electric services to deal with that directly and make sure our, our interests and that of the developer are adequately covered, and it's kind of the same reason the Water Authority still maintains their surety policy.
Yeah, the only reason I'm asking is I know that, that money gets encumbered, and, you know, I know the electric department could use that money to do capital improvements and other things, so I just.
And then the other thing is we do see a return on that investment through fees and rates.
But that's four or five years down the road.
Correct.
Yeah. I think that could, I mean, essentially, that could be a case-by-case basis where you're talking about. You know, in the agreement, in the development agreement, when you're passing that out, that could be something that's discussed. I'm sure nobody else does it, you know, so the county probably doesn't do it, so it might force them into the county instead of the town, and, and we'll have, I was just curious.
Good question.
It's a good question.
Very good. All right. Shawna?
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with six members voting aye.
And coming down the hump stretch, endorsement of an application World War II Heritage Cities Grant 2025. Mr. Warner, before you say anything, I just want to say, I am so happy to see Mr. Warner back at this meeting this, this time. The last meeting we had, he was sick, or said he was. And I had to read all of this myself, and they were very lengthy, more than what we have tonight. So I read all of it and then discussed it, and we voted for it also. Mr. Warner, I appreciate you being here. So proceed.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The appreciation's mutual, I assure you. And I swear that I am better tonight, even though I'm calling. Bedford received designation as a World War II Heritage City in December of 2023 after successful application to the National Park Service. The town led the effort in order to receive designation, which is available to only one jurisdiction in each state. The designation places Bedford on the World War II Heritage Cities website and allows us to use the official logo on materials that recognize the honor. To date, the town has not promoted the designation. A grant is currently open from the National Park Service that will provide up to $10,000 in funds for creation of materials related to the program. As the locality that submitted the original application for designation, the town is required to support or endorse any application for a grant, whether submitted by the town or a collaboration. Town staff has been working with the Bedford County Department of Tourism and the National D-Day Memorial Foundation to put a package together for how each entity could use the funds for promotion and education. The main part of the request is for design assistance in creating a Bedford-specific logo and then creating materials with the logo. These proposed materials include signs at entries to town and at the parkway, printed brochures for Destination Bedford and D-Day, and website updates with the newly designed logo that is specific to Bedford. The grant request is for the full $10,000. No matching funds are required. The town would procure a design firm for the logo creation and materials and for production of the signs and materials that are created. The town would process the receipts from work done. The town would work on placement of signs at road entries. The grant timeframe is expected to run from July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. Tonight, town council is requested to endorse the application with a letter of support.
Do we hear a motion?
So moved.
Councilman Foster made the motion, Councilman Haley seconded it. Any discussion? I think this is pretty much a given. I mean, any commission we can get for World War II, we want to give it.
You know, when they were bringing the D-Day Foundation up, they had a lot of heavy hitters involved with that. And I'm wondering if they couldn't reach out to some of those, those folks to see if they couldn't get them to help us with some of the designs and use that $10,000 for other things other than the design of something or?
Mary, who, how would you go about this as far as getting, would it be with D-Day or who else would get involved?
So the easiest way to do this, Mr. Mayor, is to work with the Destination Bedford staff, where they've already procured someone who does their website and all the destination branding thing. We've just put out a RFP for design services, so it could be anyone, but they just happen to be most familiar with Bedford and really want to continue working with it. So a design firm would be the one who would design a Bedford-specific logo as much as we can. The park service will let us go so far with the brand that exists, and what we're looking to do is make this personal, where we're going to use it here in Bedford on signage and then the brochures and then website update for the Department of Tourism. So it would be procured, scanned, processed, and that small amount doesn't require but one vote.
Good deal. All right.
Mr. Haley?
Aye.
Mr. Ippolito?
Aye.
Mr. Updike?
Aye.
Mr. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Stanley?
Aye.
Motion carries with six members voting aye.
And there is no further business, so this meeting is adjourned.